From our 22 News Broadcast Center, this is 22 News in Focus.
Good afternoon and welcome to 22 News in Focus. I'm Rich Teddermer. Massachusetts voters approved the legalization of marijuana in a statewide ballot vote in November 2016, and it was signed into law by Governor Baker in July 2017. Since then, dozens of communities have banned recreational marijuana business, and about 160 more cities and towns have a moratorium of some sort in place, with many of those moratoriums expiring at the end of this year. Springfield is one of the cities with a moratorium until September 30th, that's only weeks away. Joining me today to discuss the future of the recreational marijuana industry in Springfield are several members of the Springfield City Council who went to Denver, Colorado, in June to research and learn about the marijuana industry there. We have Orlando Ramos, the president of the Springfield City Council, Justin Hurst, the vice president of the city council, Caterie Walsh, a counselor-at-large, and Adam Gomez, the Board One counselor. Counselors, thanks for joining us this afternoon. They are color-coordinated, as you can see. We appreciate that. That looks good. Let's talk about this trip to Denver. What, if anything, changed your mind, or did you go in with some preconceived notions?
I'm going to have to put in because I am the vice president of the city council.
So there we go.
So there's a little...
Correction right off the bat.
Little glitch. Sorry about that.
I noticed Justin did that correctly on that.
Yeah, Justin keeps trying to do that.
We have the chairman of public safety.
It shows you how often the city council changes its letterhead or website.
So let's get that right. Caterie Walsh, the vice president of the city council. Make sure I get that right the next time around, so I appreciate that.
Thank you. I'm sorry to do that.
I appreciate you pointing that out.
I'm continuously learning, Caterie.
All right. All right. Let's first talk about your opinions. What were they? What question did you have before you went on this trip to Denver? Orlando?
Well, I had many questions. My outlook on recreational marijuana in the beginning was very conservative. I probably had one of the most conservative views in terms of our colleagues on the city council. I voted against medical marijuana. I voted against recreational marijuana when it was on the ballot. And so I went into this process with the intent of, how can we limit this as much as possible? But that trip to Denver really changed my outlook on recreational marijuana. What I saw from the city of Denver was that it was a flourishing industry that did a lot of great things for the city in terms of revenue and public safety. And so it was very beneficial to me, and I came back with a more positive outlook on recreational marijuana. And I learned that this is an industry that we have to embrace, and we should take advantage of it, and just be very cautious of what we have to do in terms of regulating it.
Justin, your thoughts before you went to Denver?
I had actually gone about four months ago. And so what I saw four months ago led me to the conclusion that I wanted to make sure, before we implemented anything, that my colleagues had the opportunity to see what I saw. And I knew how important it would be, because this is a new industry. You know, I'm a former teacher, and so I know that any time you enter the unknown, it's great to have and model after best practices and what other people have done, and model after their successes. And so I saw Denver flourishing. I saw recreational marijuana where it was embraced, and I knew it would be an opportunity for the city of Springfield. But I also knew if you didn't see it, the likelihood that you would believe what it was that I saw would be next to nil. And so I came back and immediately talked to President Ramos, and not only was I encouraging counselors to come, but I also had wanted, I was hopeful that the administration would send some of their own people, because, you know, it takes, a lot goes into making these regulations. And it would have been a great opportunity, even for the administration, to talk to the people that we're able to have the opportunity to talk to. So I had learned a lot before, and I was excited that my colleagues were able to benefit from this trip.
Vice President, Caterie Walsh, your thoughts?
Thank you very much. Well, you know, I think once the voters of Massachusetts approved marijuana, all of us had to look at it quite differently. I've obviously been very supportive of medical marijuana, because when we had testimony at the city council chambers about citing a marijuana clinic, so many people came down and talked about chronic pain and the relief that they got, and you could see the benefits. But I really changed my mind about retail when I went to Denver. I mean, their retail shops just blended seamlessly into their downtown areas. You really didn't even know they were there. We found out how secure they were. And when we went to the cultivation center, we could see how many people are working. And what I came away with in Denver, and I think what we're all trying to do with our regulations, is treating it as a business and making the best deal for the citizens of Springfield.
Sounds like it was an eye-opening experience.
It really was.
Adam, your thoughts on that?
Well, I like to think that from the very beginning, you know, pro the industry. I know, I can't say that I know too much about it, but being the chairman of economic development, I already had received the draft regulations that were proposed by our planning and also PVPC. So I wanted, in going to Colorado and seeing what it is, how they're operating, how they're going about it, gave me a better outlook on really questioning the different regulations that there were proposed. So then, while we were there, we got to see what works and what doesn't work, and what are things that we have to, that probably weren't in our draft ordinance that would have worked or will work when we definitely get to the finish line when it comes to recreational. But going to Colorado was kind of, we can think that we know, and we have professionals on our side, but really dealing with individuals like the sitting president at the time when the regulations came through, and then with the new president, President Brooks, and meeting with their policy department and folks, and learning how much money that they had brought in, and how they created more jobs within the city of Denver when it came to public safety, and basically when it came to licensing, and those things that we'll get into later. But it was definitely made me realize there was more to it than what I really assumed that there was.
It's interesting, in this day and age, in the 21st century, that we have two industries now that we're looking at to make money: marijuana and gambling, and they're both coming to Springfield. Your thoughts on that?
Absolutely. And I think, you know, the timing is right for the city of Springfield. We went through a lot of natural disasters and man-made disasters, but we have come out of that with enormous opportunities with MGM Springfield, and now the recreational marijuana industry. We have to be cognizant of that, and the fact that a lot of the communities around us have banned it, and it still remains illegal in the states that are around us, creates an opportunity for the city of Springfield to be able to capitalize on that. And so we have to be cognizant of that, and realize that we're not just serving the individuals in the city of Springfield. We're serving tourism. We're serving, you know, folks that are going to be coming from other communities to take advantage of this.
What sort of regulations did you find out in Denver that you think would work here in Springfield?
I think there are a variety of different things. One of the things that I liked the most was what they did with the revenue. The fact that they ensured that the people that were going to share the burden in implementing the regulations were also in turn reimbursed in the long run. And so they added jobs in their planning department. They also added positions in their law department, and they also added positions from a public safety standpoint. The reality is, is that when you implement anything new, you have to monitor. And piggybacking off of that, another thing I thought was critical was the data, because it's one thing for us to go back, for us to say this is effective, it's bringing in revenue, it's reducing opioid use, it's doing a variety of different positive things, but people want to see the data. And so one of the things that they did that was most significant was create a team of people to actually study the implementations and the effects of recreational marijuana in the state of Colorado. And I think we need to do that here, and I think we have a great opportunity, and we just need to make sure that we allocate funding at the outset so that we can accomplish those goals.
It's interesting that you picked Colorado, because they've had recreational marijuana for a number of years now, so they have that data to draw back on and allow you to see the mistakes that maybe they made that you can correct on.
Absolutely.
That was, I'm sorry.
To follow up on what Counselor Hurst just said about the regulations that they have put into place, we were able to see not only what went well, but they also shared with us things they might have done differently. But the point that you made about city services, they made sure that any city service that was touched by marijuana, by the use, you know, the fire department, the police department, zoning, code enforcement, that those departments were fully staffed and funded, which I think would be fabulous in the city of Springfield if all these departments can have this funding. And the revenue that comes in, I think, is going to make people take a second look at marijuana, and I think we're going to see that it's going to be really, a lot of states are really going to go and approve it, because the economics are going to drive it.
Once again, we're talking about dollars, so we'll get to that, and continue our conversation when we return. You're watching 22 News in Focus. Welcome back to 22 News in Focus, and today we're talking about the future of the recreational marijuana industry in Springfield. Our panel of guests are members of the Springfield City Council that recently returned from a trip to Denver, Colorado, to research the marijuana industry in that state. And here we go with our counselors once again. Let's talk about your trip. How many days were you there? Who did you talk to, and did you get to visit any of the facilities there?
We were there for two days, and we met with several members of the administration in Denver, Colorado. We spoke to their legislative director, the person who, I forget the title, the exact title, but she runs the, sort of, the commission that handles marijuana in the city of Denver. We met with the city council president, and the person who was the city council president at the time that they drafted the marijuana regulations. We learned, the information that we learned in this trip was invaluable. You know, we were able to discuss not only the benefits of recreational marijuana, but also the pitfalls. And, you know, that was one of the things that I was more interested in, because I wanted to hear the pros and cons, not just, you know, the positive things, but also what to look out for. We also met with the Ward III counselor there, Counselor Lopez, who was not always a proponent of marijuana, and he educated us on some of the pitfalls, and gave us some ideas of what we can implement here that would be beneficial, and we took some of those ideas and put them into our draft.
Let's talk about those pitfalls for a second, because even as we said before about gambling, there are pitfalls involved with that, so there's like two sides to every issue. Same with marijuana. What are the pitfalls that they talk about in Colorado?
One of the things that, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Adam.
A pitfall is that some of these locations were oversaturated in minority communities. Sometimes what Counselor Lopez had stated, that if we don't implement some type of piece of the legislation that states that they can't be inside of a residential, a residential zone, or where there's residents, because some of these stores were changing from a regular convenience store into these recreational dispensaries, and basically, in his community, instead of seeing them on main roads, they were seeing them inside of their community. So that's why a part of our ordinance is that we would like to see them on main roads only, and not inside of the communities at all, and make sure that, you know, they're visible on a well-traveled road.
Where other businesses are.
Where other businesses are in business districts.
And there are also regulations that you have about boundaries, about how close they can be to certain things, like schools and public parks and things like that, right?
Absolutely. We, right now, are looking at a 500-feet buffer from existing private school that is, or public school, that is K to 12. So that certainly will shield some of the younger folks from being enticed. In addition, that you can't, none of the paraphernalia can be visible, which is what we saw in Denver from the outside in. And so you wouldn't even know that these shops exist, but, you know, they are highly secure, and there are a number of procedures within the actual facilities that would prevent folks who shouldn't be using marijuana from using marijuana.
To follow up with what Justin said, I mean, I think we're all very impressed by the security involved. When you actually go into a retail establishment, you have to have ID. I mean, it's heavily controlled. The cameras are everywhere, and there were not, as a point you made at the meeting last night, there are not a lot of people hanging around, you know, loitering or anything like that. Very, very secure when you are in there.
Is there a police presence there, or is it not?
The cameras.
There's cameras?
There's cameras everywhere, but they said that they have assisted the police. Because of their cameras, it has helped them, and sometimes in Amber Alerts and things like that. So that was a point that I hadn't really thought about before, but I think that's a good thing for the citizens of Springfield to know, that there's extra security, because I think we're all concerned about that.
And we just talked about the number of cameras that Union Station has that are directly fed to the real-time crime lab that we have in the police department. Just imagine if we required all of these stores to have that, you know, have a similar feed, you know. Just imagine how safe folks would feel in that particular area.
It sounds like you came away with a positive feeling, but you said you went there thinking that this was not a good idea. Did you talk to people who opposed recreational marijuana and still oppose it in Colorado?
Well, one of the people that we met was, as we mentioned earlier, Councilwoman Lopez, who was an opponent of marijuana, and so we were able to learn a lot of the things to look out for. And his insight was very helpful to us in preparation for what we're doing, because we have to be very careful. You know, we've never seen this before. You know, this is the first time that it's coming to Massachusetts, first time that we're going to see it in the city of Springfield, and so we have to be very careful in terms of how we regulate it.
Were they vocal about this opposition?
Well, President Brooks had stated before we met with Counselor Lopez that he was an opponent and was very conservative when it came to it. And he expressed, because he had to leave to another, to go vote, that once he seen what it had done to the city, the revenue it came in, that he said that now I'm fighting tooth and nail to keep it and to make sure it's continuously done right. The sitting president was probably the most progressive person we talked to, the other council member, but out of three counselors that we spoke to, two of them were opposed to the measure, and then one of them, and some of the other colleagues that we didn't get to meet, they passed it. And then now that he's the sitting president, he's the one that actually put these meetings together, so then we can have the right information, because he did say that there was a lot of misconceptions. So leaving Springfield to Colorado, of course, we had some misconceptions that we had in our own mind, but then were clarified when it came to, oh, the rate of if kids, if this is getting in kids' hands, or the rate of how much money is being used to educate kids in school. And they made, they made over $40 million, and they used only 8.8 to be able to stabilize the city and make sure that every single department that would feel some tension in having to oversee marijuana was fully funded and making sure that it was operating the correct way with 8.8 million dollars. Not saying that that's what we will generate in Springfield, because Springfield is a smaller city, but that's just a stepping stone that we can work off to know that, you know, wherever we're short, some of this money can be resourceful.
And one of the other things, too, is that, and yeah, I know you talked about some of the pitfalls that we need to be mindful of. A lot of my colleagues and I want the small businesses to be able to take advantage of recreational marijuana, especially in a city like Springfield, where folks have been disproportionately impacted by marijuana when it was not legal. And so one of the things that they ran into was the fact that you had a number of big businesses coming in and taking advantage of the market, and so they weren't able to control, you know, they weren't able to control it as much as they wanted it, to where small businesses would be able to take advantage of it. In addition, you had rent hikes that were through the roof. And so once folks knew that you were interested in opening up a recreational marijuana shop, they would see rents go, you know, skyrocket, you know, from $2,000 a month to $16,000 a month. And so that automatically eliminates the small guy. So, you know, we need to think about that as we're moving forward and looking to implement these regulations.
This is a brand-new revenue stream we're talking about here that has been untapped until now. There are people who have been smoking marijuana illegally, obviously. If you want it, you can get it. How will this change the perception of the drug itself and people's own perception of it?
I think with medicinal, that was our first step into changing the narrative. And something when I got into elected office is using myself as a direct person that was affected by low-level drug offenses, and being able to fight for those changes on a legislative level in the state, and then seeing from decriminalization now to the, of marijuana, and now knowing that, you know, as a man, that of course, you know, we are putting our residents first, and their children, and we don't want this to get into harm's way. But there's, the way we can measure this at some point is alcohol. Alcohol, it's, when you go drive by a liquor store, you have the lights flashing, you can see the different types of alcoholic beverages that are being put out there to our community, that, you know, and then that drives people to, you know, or want to be, it's like a temptation. In essence, when we went to Colorado, we didn't see that at all. When we went to the first location, it was completely white, and it had a cross that was green. And if you look at the signage from the state, it doesn't allow them to project like marijuana symbols, or marijuana plants, or have flashing lights saying, hey, buy your situation here, you know?
And you know, another thing that was an eye-opener when we actually went into the retail, and cultivation was a real eye-opener, but the number of, I'd never seen it before, other paraphernalia that goes along with marijuana and other businesses that can spring up as a result of having the marijuana and the different packaging and, you know, it was a real eye-opener to me.
You got to get out a little more, Caterie.
I think so, well, yeah.
Just joking. We'll continue our discussion. What challenges does Springfield face in creating regulations for the recreational marijuana industry? We'll find out after the break. You're watching 22 News in Focus. You're watching 22 News in Focus, and today we're talking about the city of Springfield's plans for regulating recreational marijuana businesses, and I'm joined by four members of the Springfield City Council, including the president, Orlando Ramos, Justin Hurst, Caterie Walsh, and Adam Gomez. Once again, thank you for joining us today.
Thank you.
We really appreciate it. Yes. Let's talk about medical marijuana for a second. What medical marijuana businesses are here in Springfield now?
There's only one medical marijuana facility, INSA, that's on Cottage Street.
And that's the one on Cottage Street. Obviously, that's also a plan, not only to sell medical marijuana, but also recreational marijuana, right?
Well, through the state guidelines, they get grandfathered in, and they receive their recreational license. Once they go for it, they can receive their recreational without, you know, having to go through the guidelines that we're trying to end by the time of the, end the moratorium, I mean.
Which is September 30th, the moratorium. Let's talk about medicinal marijuana for a second, because we actually had it in the news this past week, where medical marijuana could help fight in the opioid epidemic. So there are, you know, if you go into this with open eyes, there are a lot of benefits to regulating marijuana. Talk about that for a second, and how different it is when we talk medicinal to recreational. Orlando?
Well, I think it'll be beneficial once, you know, the federal government, you know, makes, you know, if we do something at the federal level to make it legal to research...
Which is the problem right now, because federally it's illegal.
Exactly. And so that restricts as to how much research that can be done, right? And so one of the things that we're concerned about is the long-term research, you know, and I think that there's, I think that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is committed to investing into the research of medical marijuana and marijuana itself, and the benefits of it. And so that's one of the things that I think down the road, we'll be able to get a little bit more clear answer to.
How does regulating medicinal marijuana compare to recreational marijuana? What are the differences?
I just want to make a point on what Counselor Ramos said about research, because, you know, without the federal government being involved, there's not enough data being collected. But what they set out there in Denver, which I think people would be happy to hear, is that they're trying to create some kind of a strain that will help with epilepsy. So I mean, to actually have the testing and the data that could impact that drug that affects so many people would be very, very positive.
Like we said, you know, it could help possibly in the opioid epidemic, and you bring up epilepsy as well, as Parkinson's, as even in the fight against cancer, to, you know, to make it easier for people to cope.
Right.
That strain is actually called Charlotte's Web.
Charlotte's Web, oh, yes.
Charlotte's Web is a strain that helped with epilepsy. They've seen, what we learned in the state of Colorado, of how many people moved in from other places because they knew that medicinally, that medicinal marijuana did more and better for their child or their self than having to try to come here and try to get it to the state that they lived in, that they seen, they have this kind of term that we've learned, that they ask you, are you a native, and a native meaning if you're resident, or born and raised in Colorado, or what we've met along, you know, meeting people, a lot of people from different places moved there. Before we got off the plane, people were telling me, yeah, we moved here from New York, we moved here from Montana, we moved here from California. Even President Brooks was from LA. And a lot of these folks in Colorado, a lot of these people moved to take part in medicinal marijuana because of their health conditions and what it has done for them and their children.
And the other thing is that it's not, it's not like they're growing a different plant for recreational marijuana. They're going to use the same plants that they use for medicinal marijuana. And so in the event that you, you know, you didn't want what was bothering you, you know, put out there for folks, you could go into, or you didn't have a medicinal card, you could just merely go into the recreational facility, get the similar strand or plant that you would use to treat whatever you had medically, and you'd be able to, you know, utilize the recreational plant to treat whatever was bothering you. So, you know, I think we're going to find that it's going to be a benefit across the board, both medicinal and recreational.
It sounds like it's a boon to tourism as well, and also state residency. You mentioned that people are literally moving there to take part in medicinal marijuana and now recreational marijuana.
The only thing that was different, what I noticed very quickly, was just price. With your medicinal, it's like if you go to a pharmacy and you need a type of medicine, it's going to cost you more when you don't have the prescription versus when you do have the prescription or the card. So, and that's what gets into, you know, that pitfall of, in our state, of getting rid of the black market, making sure that you have a safe place where you can get your medicine, and since we're talking about medicinal, get your medicine and get it safe, and not have to, you know, go into what people call, or stigmatize as shady areas. You know, they can go into a certain place, order whatever product that they need, receive it, and they can get in their car and go home and be able to use it safely.
And it's tracked from seed to sale.
Yeah, it's tracked.
Whether it's medicinal or recreational, it's still tracked from seed to sale. So you don't have to go and buy it from your local drug dealer, where you don't know where it's coming from. You don't know where they got it from. You don't know where it was grown.
You don't know if it was leased, you know?
Exactly. So I think there are a number of unforeseen benefits that, you know, I think a lot of people might not be thinking about, that hopefully after they watch the show, they will.
Right, yeah. And one thing, too, you mentioned the tourism. Everywhere we went in the city of Denver, there was growth. There were either apartment buildings going up, or businesses going up, and the different Uber drivers, you know, shared with us, you know, how busy the city of Denver is, and people come there for the marijuana, and really has helped with their tourism, and helps the city with its bottom line. I think we're hopeful that when it is implemented and monies come in with taxes, because there are taxes and fees and permits and so forth, that it can be dedicated to those city departments that will be affected by it, as it was in Denver.
Why not Springfield?
Why not?
Why not Springfield? And it's a very exciting time for Springfield right now, not only with the brand-new casino, but also with this possibility as well, as I said, a brand-new revenue stream that could mean millions more dollars for the economy. We'll learn more about Springfield's plans for recreational marijuana after this break. You're watching 22 News in Focus. Welcome back to 22 News in Focus, and today we've been discussing the city of Springfield's plans for regulating recreational marijuana, and joining us are the four city counselors from the Springfield City Council. We appreciate you guys joining us once again, and lady as well. Let's go back quickly to the moratorium that you had that is going to expire on September 30th. A lot of towns, a lot of places have said, we don't want recreational marijuana there. We don't want the shops. We don't want that happening in our city. It's happening in here, but you put a moratorium... It's happening in here, but you put a moratorium up first. Why did you do that?
Well, it was very important to have a moratorium in place to give us the time that we need to regulate this, uh, this industry. As I mentioned earlier, uh, this is the first time that we're seeing it in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And so we're, essentially, we're starting from, starting from scratch. And so, um, it was important to us to be able to educate ourselves as much as possible prior to tackling the, uh, the, uh, the task of regulating marijuana. And so the moratorium is set to expire on September 30th. We intend to have the regulations done beforehand. The other reason why it was very, very important for us to do this and why it worked out so well is because one of the things that they kept emphasizing in Denver was, take your time. Take your time and get it done right because particularly when it comes to zoning, once these establishments are allowed to open, there's very little that we can do to take it back and to, um, afterwards. And so we gotta make sure that we get it right the first time.
It's good that Springfield's following that lead. The state has really taken that lead as well because, you know, it was approved last November and everyone's like, whoa, here we go, January 1st is ready to go, but the rollout date of July 1st even went by and it still hasn't happened yet. So it's good that you're taking your time to figure out what actually works best because a lot of people obviously have some reservations about marijuana just from what they have heard about it. So it's interesting that you guys have taken that approach to make sure you get the right, you do the right thing.
I was talking to, I'm sorry, I was talking to someone, um, the other day who actually was an expert in the field, and they looked at our draft regulations and they said that, uh, they've read through a number of draft regulations or a number of regulations, well over 60, and they said that we had, even before we've debated a lot of the hot topic issues as to what's going to be included, some of the most comprehensive regulations that they've seen. So I thought that was a credit to, uh, you know, Phil Dromey, Attorney Davis, and the Law Department, and certainly to, you know, all of us and our colleagues. We're not done, but, um, we're certainly going to take our time and hopefully produce something that's even stronger.
Right. And to get back to the moratorium, I think one of the reasons that we had the moratorium was because the state regulations were not in place and that we will obviously follow, the city of Springfield will follow the regulations from the state, but we've been very fortunate that we've also gotten feedback and advice from the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, from our own city department, Phil Dromey, and then our own experiences and the regulations we've come forward with. It, it's not like, you know, we're doing this without advice and without guidelines, and I think that's probably why when we do finalize it, we're gonna have something that, as I said before, not only benefits the city of Springfield, but comes with a lot of good advice, data, and regulations.
What regulations do you find that are essential?
Zoning and distances and where you actually place the different types of establishment.
What about growing facilities? Where are they located?
Growing facilities by state regulation are only to be, um, placed in industrial A or industrial zones and, uh...
In the city?
In the city or around the state, whoever it is, whatever it is that they cut, each city council, each municipality. When it comes to cultivation centers, they have to be in industrial areas. Aside from the dispensaries where we're proposing that they, uh, can be in, uh, Business A, Business B, and Business C, um, not inside of buildings that are, have residential and are on, uh, main or major roads that the planning department and some of the council believe should, uh, be recognized as places where these facilities can be or dispensaries.
And we want to be welcoming to especially the cultivation facilities, and I know you've said this on a number of occasions, Caterie, what we saw in Denver was absolutely amazing in terms of the number of people that were working at these facilities. And so we talk about the casino, um, uh, we talk about CRRC and a variety of other economic development boosts that added jobs to the city of Springfield. These cultivation facilities, if we can attract people to the city of Springfield, will be absolutely huge.
These are brand-new jobs.
These are brand-new jobs.
It's a whole new industry, really.
One facility was, I think, uh, they had about 600 people employed at the facility that we toured. Each room that we went into, um, I'd be lying if there wasn't about 30 to 40 people in those rooms. And they were like tightly packed because there's different places and parts of the building they were, but it's like bringing the industrial, uh, revolution back. Like it's like the prohibition's done and some of these folks, we seen them, we, you wouldn't know the different jobs it takes to make this, uh, a realization for a company. There's so many different, uh, things that they were doing that I, you would never really realize were part of making sure that product meets its consumer.
And they were all ages too. I think that was the other thing that, that was interesting, that the people that were working in the cultivation center, and they're, they're all very cheerful too. Everybody's very happy to have a job.
There might be a reason for that.
As we said though, there are a lot of cities and towns right in western Massachusetts that want no part of this. Why is that and what do you say to them?
I personally believe that it's just a complete misconception and they're missing out on an opportunity for their town or their city to grow. Um, I don't live in those towns or cities and I don't, um, really understand their demographic, but what I've seen is that there's jobs, one, first and foremost. It's, it's not that we want to, um, encourage people to indulge and to, um, use this, uh, type of, uh, medicine in the wrong way. It's, it's about jobs. It, it's about making sure people can, can have a living wage, have an opportunity. Moreover, it's, they're good-paying jobs, people that can at least feed their families doing it. And then when there's, uh, there's this economic boom, why not take a part of it specifically, as you mentioned, you know, with the casino opening and with the spinoffs happening after that with the different, um, you know, trades coming in. This gives an opportunity for some folks that maybe aren't into the trade field, but probably are probably green thumbs or understand that type of industry well and that they can have a future in their industry, which they were, um, basically, uh, taken out of because it was illegal before.
And I have to give Mayor Reich out of, uh, Reich out of West Springfield a shout-out. Uh, he, he's certainly ahead of the curve and probably ahead of his time, uh, in West Springfield and understands that people are going to get their marijuana from somewhere. And so either they're gonna get it from West Springfield or they're gonna get it from Springfield. And if they're gonna get it from, um, if they're gonna get it anyway, why not take advantage of it in the area in which you are in and reap the benefits from a revenue standpoint? Um, so I, I, I think we're poised to do well in Springfield.
So I think, uh, so those communities around us that have banned it, um, they voted against medical marijuana or recreational marijuana. The city of Springfield voted for it, and so the city of Springfield never had the option to, to sort of ban it. Um, but what I would say to those communities and what I would say to people that, that banned, uh, recreational marijuana is that this isn't anything that to be afraid of. You know, one of the, one of the things that I learned is that I, I don't, I don't fear it as much as I did prior to going to Denver, you know, because of the wonderful things that it's done for their community. Um, one of the benefits of this, as my colleague mentioned earlier, is the fact that there's no black market. The black market in Colorado, Colorado doesn't exist. And that's one of the things that we're hoping for here in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is that once these marijuana establishments start opening up, there will be no, no black market.
It can change so many different things.
Absolutely.
In that regard alone. Uh, we'll continue our discussion of the business of marijuana right after this break. You're watching 22 News in Focus. You're watching 22 News in Focus, and today we've been talking about regulating marijuana businesses in the city of Springfield. It's been a year since the governor signed the legalization of recreational marijuana into law. The Cannabis Control Commission has issued seven provisional retail licenses to six different marijuana companies planning to open retail stores across the state. Most still have to pass final building and health inspections as well as employee background checks, but before any can open, the commission has to license an independent testing lab, and that's what we're waiting on right now. I'm joined by four Springfield city councillors, Orlando Ramos, who is the president of the Springfield City Council, Justin Hurst, and Caterie Walsh, and Adam Gomez. Thanks once again for joining us. We appreciate it. Before we get to talking about, uh, the future of this, how much, how much planning do you have as far as, there's one medicinal marijuana facility right now in Springfield. How many more of them will there be? How many recreational pot shops will there be?
We're in the process of making those decisions as, as we speak. Tomorrow night, we have a meeting of the Springfield City Council to, uh, to revisit the language that we're proposing from the, the Committee on Marijuana Regulations. The current proposal doesn't have a, a cap on the amount of, um, recreational marijuana retail shops that there could be in the city. However, there is, there are restrictions in terms of where they can be located. For example, they can only be located on major roads, on lots of zone, Business A, Business B, Business C, um, or industrial. Uh, in addition to that, they cannot be located within 300 feet of each other. And so that, those regulations will, um, will, will, will sort of, will control how many, um, marijuana retail establishments there could be in the city and that will regulate it in itself.
So these won't be popping up in every, it's, every street corner?
Absolutely not. We're being very, very thoughtful. We're, we're thinking this through to make sure that they're located properly in, in the city. Um, but there, there is also still the possibility that we may cap the number, the total number of licenses that, that can be given out, but that's up for discussion beginning tomorrow.
I found really interesting that you, when you went to Denver and you visited and went to Colorado, you found out that these shops are very inconspicuous. It's not like they have large billboards that say, get your pot here, flashing yellow lights and all that stuff. It's, it's very inconspicuous. Tell us about that.
Well, unless you knew the actual name of, of the different retail, like the ones we visited were called Native Roots, you would really not know what the store was for. And we liked that very much, that it was inconspicuous and just really blended in with the surroundings. And I think that's a plus. And I think that's something that might make people, uh, give them some, some comfort that it isn't gonna be like, uh, other establishment, you know, flashing signs, people loitering, hanging about, that these really were, were well-done businesses in your neighborhood. You could walk right by it, you wouldn't, you would not know what it was. And when you go inside, the security is very evident. And, and if you do walk in, you do have to have ID. So I mean, it's very tightly controlled.
Let me just go back to your last point. Uh, one thing, um, that I've been, uh, that I felt very strongly about is that we cannot have one company in the city of Springfield have a monopoly on the industry. Currently, right now, Ensa has that when it comes to medicinal marijuana. We cannot stop Ensa from getting a recreational license. The last thing that I want to see is one company benefiting from all of the revenue that is going to come to the city of Springfield. And so I will continue to fight tooth and nail to see that that does not happen. On top of that, if you look at the location of Ensa, it is very difficult for people in the inner city to take two buses to get to a medicinal facility or a recreational facility. And what they will ultimately do is to continue to buy it from the local drug dealer, and that's not what we want to see.
That's a good point.
Forever. Marijuana's been known as the gateway drug. That's what they say. Marijuana use will lead to other things. And there's also a concern about people driving under the influence. What did they tell you about that in Colorado? What would make the difference here in Springfield?
Well, that actually was a concern because they, they didn't feel, you know, the, the driving under the influence, you know, with alcohol, it's, it's easy to test, but I don't think they felt that, uh, with, with the marijuana, there, there was enough data, as we talked about before, or, uh, regulations in place and that they, they actually, I think, were working on that in Denver because they didn't think that system had been perfected.
What are the penalties for that? Are there penalties for that? You said that there's no way to calibrate that like you would with alcohol.
There's no way to measure it, but, um, if you are caught, uh, under the influence, it's just like under the influence of, with, under alcohol. So you, you can still be charged with an OUI and obviously if, um, you have, there's certain measures that the state has regulated that you can't have over an ounce on you or, and, and things like that if you don't have a medicinal card. So those still laws are still, still in place. It doesn't change anything that what's happening now.
And the state of Colorado has, um, uh, trainings available for their law enforcement authorities to educate themselves as to how to identify a person who's under the influence of, of marijuana. And I, and I know that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, um, our state troopers are, have also been, um, that training has also been made available to them as well. But it's a, it's a work in progress. I mean, we don't have the answers today. That's why more research is necessary and that's why we're hoping that eventually we'll have their research available.
How does the money from the marijuana industry come to Springfield? How does that work out?
Well, there are several ways. Uh, one, uh, we have the option of implementing a 3% local tax, which we have. Uh, the city council approved that local tax back in May, I believe. Um, and then we, we also have the option of, um, asking for an additional 3% under a host community agreement, um, for community impact. And so that in itself will create a lot of revenue for the city, for the city of Springfield. Um, and then we can ask for additional things under the host community agreement, um, to, to, to offset the, the impact in, in the community. So, um, we're, we're talking about a lot of money. We're talking about, you know, potentially millions of dollars that are gonna come to the city of Springfield in revenue.
You have a chance to talk to your constituents here and tell them what you knew and what you knew before and what you've learned about going to Colorado and finding out about their industry if you have, we have about two minutes left. See if we can coalesce what you learned from that and what you can tell the people of Springfield about going forward here.
So what I would tell my constituents is that this is a, a new industry to our city, to our, to our state, um, but it isn't anything that we should be afraid of. This is a business. We should treat it as a business and it's gonna be very beneficial to our city and to our taxpayers.
Justin?
Uh, folks want to see, uh, more, more roadwork done. Folks want to see more stride, uh, more sidewalks paved. Uh, folks want to see more after-school programs for the youth. Embrace the industry and all of the other things will come that require additional revenues. Right now, uh, we're not in a great financial state, certainly better now that MGM is here, but this is an opportunity to add additional revenue.
Well, you know, marijuana is something that has been approved, so it is here. So I think the best thing to do is, is, is to regulate it and make sure that it works. And, uh, what I learned out there and what I, as I said before, I think what we're trying to do is to treat it as, as a, as a business and have the revenues that will support city services and also messages that need to be sent regarding, uh, children and youth and so forth and so on. But because it is here, I think it's really prudent to set tight regulations.
Adam?
Well, um, I would like to say that, you know, feel confident in your elected officials that you have trusted. Um, I think this, uh, we have 13 members on the council that are willing to, to meet. Um, but like President Ramos had stated, um, we have two to three more meetings that are coming up that we invite, it's open meeting for all of our constituents to, to take part in this process and to let us know how they feel. It's important to reach out to your ward counselors or to your at-large counselors because we have to make, uh, these difficult decisions, but you have to trust that these difficult decisions are being made with the right intentions.
It's a good point to end on right there. You elected these counselors. You have a chance to talk to them. Make your voice heard as well. We'll have the last word for you after the break. Stay with us. You're watching 22 News in Focus. You've been watching 22 News in Focus, and today we've been talking about an exploratory trip that several members of Springfield City Council took to Colorado to learn about the recreational marijuana industry in the state and their efforts to create regulations for those proposed businesses here in Springfield. That's our program for today. I want to thank our city councillors for joining us today. We really appreciate it. Thank you very much. And thank you for joining us at home. If you missed any of the show, you can watch it again in full on our website at WWLP.com. From all of us here at 22 News, we wish you a very wonderful Sunday. See ya.[1775.51]